Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And this is our last scheduled meeting of the year. Isn't that nice? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Schwartz for the pledge and moment's.
As Mayor just said, this is our last meeting of 2020. And so to say this has been a challenging year, I think would definitely be an understatement. However, as I've said through many, many meetings, the, I'm so proud of the resiliency and the strength of this community. I am equally as proud to represent this community. Neighbors taking care of each other, the community rallying around small businesses, and doing the best we can to keep each other healthy and safe. If we could all take a minute to bow our heads for a moment of silence or a personal prayer to reflect upon the blessings that also came from 2020. May we remember to take life a little slower, spend more quality time with those we love and hold dear, and remember how important a phone call may be to a family or friend. May we always remember that we are stronger together even when we are apart, and may we have hopes and prayers of a brighter 2021.
If you'll all join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you having an agenda before us this evening? Any corrections or changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. First off is the November 16th, 2020 budget work session. Any changes, any corrections?
Move to approve the November 16th budget work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the November 16th meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.
Aye.
Next is the agenda, or the minutes for the November 19th, 2020 budget work session. Any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 19th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next are the minutes from the November 23rd, 2020 work session.
Move to approve November 23rd work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the November 23rd minutes as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is the November 23rd, 2020 regular meeting. We had a busy night, didn't we?
Move to approve November 23rd regular meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the November 23rd regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are the minutes from the November 30th, 2020 special meeting. Anyone?
So. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the November 30th special meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the State of the City Budget Message. Manager, Mr. Landrum.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Adams, and City Council. Tonight, we will, you know, you have handouts at your seat if you want to follow along one way or the other. Purpose of the State of the City is kind of a fourfold thing. To one, the State of the City is to address, is provided annually to update citizens on the current fiscal accountability, operations of capital accomplishments of the city to present the upcoming municipal budget, and near future plans for city improvements to maintain enhanced facilities and service delivery. And this is one I added because per charter, this should be done annually as well, and inventory of the properties of the city as of the end of each fiscal year, which was actually interesting to go through. Nothing surprise, but interesting, say the least. As city manager, I'm always proud to share with the community, the State of the Address, the State of the City address, the State of the City provides just a snapshot. Remember, this is a frozen snapshot in time, and the transition to 2021. Hopefully, this year is a much better transition than last year. A complete version of the State of the City with the Department of Accomplishments Goals will be available on the city website sometime this week. It's much lengthier. I'll try to speed this along, but the full version is more in-depth on all the accomplishments the city departments did this year. So please check that out when it's available. So 2020, we started, has been a challenging year for all, of course. You know, we started with, remember, this time last year, we're thinking, phew, we made it through May, the tornado, the cleanup, we had huge piles of brush, and that we thought, man, that's going to be our first task to do in 2020, is to get those brush piles chipped up, hauled away, and out of here. But it didn't take long, and actually only 19 days into the year that we lost Jeff McGrath. And so that set us back on our heels. Council was gracious enough in October to approve a name change of a road by Dunkin' Donuts to McGrath Way, a part of Lance Road. And I like to say about what Jeff, I said, if we do it the McGrath Way, I'm sure we will be successful. And that is all Jeff ever wanted for Beaver Creek, is for Beaver Creek to be successful. So we have that, that's the least we could do for Jeff in his memory, and may it stand for forever. And as we hope to get that road completed and punched out to Dayton-Zenia Road sometime in the very near future. So then, of course, on the heels of that, here comes COVID, and that not just changed our city, that changed our entire country. You know, at first, when it started, we thought we just had to flatten the curve, and it'd be two weeks, it'd be three weeks, it'd be a month, and then we began to see the bigger picture that this isn't going away anytime soon. With that, we shifted, tornado cleanup and COVID pandemic resulted in staff shifting priorities, delays in capital improvements, infrastructure, and delays in equipment purchases, the whole gamut. The pandemic also created significant services modifications and reductions in operations at the senior center, golf course, parks, recreation, culture, but it did everything. It changed the way the police had to function, it changed the way public service had to function, it changed every department to a certain degree, just being the six feet and wearing mask and having clean everything all the time. So it changed everything we do. The financial impacts of COVID-19, these are trying times, but I tell you, staff continued with the day-to-day operations and provide the region's best possible municipal services to the community, all the while trying to reduce expenditures to match the service levels and additional costs, at the same time to provide the employees and residents and the facilities protection to curb the pandemic. So at the same time, we had, while we're trying to cut expenses, because we're going to lose revenue, which I'll touch on, we had to actually spend money to make sure everybody was safe. Due to state mandates, shutdowns, the city closed a golf course and the senior center during this period of time, all recreational activities as well for a period of time, causing permanent layoffs to three full-time employees and two part-time employees at the golf course. That's where we are right now, that's under the food and beverage department, and that's something we'll be looking at in 2021. Also, four full-time and two part-time employees at the Beaver Creek Senior Center and Parks and Recreation were temporarily laid off during the shutdown order. There was a period of time when the shutdown order happened, it just shut everything down for those types of activities that we could not do. And with, you know, the cut loss in revenues that were coming and unknown, you got to remember, every Thursday, Governor was coming on, what's next? We really didn't know. And so we had to get ahead of the curve, so to speak, regarding our expenses and trying to project what revenues are going to be impacted. So we not only laid off those staff as well, there was a reduction in delay in hiring seasonal staff, a hiring freeze included full-time and part-time and seasonal positions, except for those deemed essential. And I had to make those as a day-by-day decision, you know, as the infrastructure came up, the grass still needed cutting, the roads still needed work to be done or things removed. So we had to continue to move forward with some. Freeze on current seasonal positions, hours except those deemed essential, you know, some of the, you know, the parks, a lot of parks, any recreational seasonal staff and stuff like that weren't hired. We wanted to get them in place, so we hired, we did tell them, okay, you're officially hired, but we don't know when you'll start. We tried to do some of those, again, thinking, okay, any day, this could go back to normal. Well, you know, that didn't happen. Freeze on capital items not already ordered unless approved by the city manager, capital purchasing, capital projects, some of the stuff already happened, were in line, already ordered, and some things, we just felt like we had to move ahead anyway on. Here's some of the revenues that we were looking at that did, were impacted, and these are estimates, we aren't finished with the year, but pretty close estimates. Hotel motel tax, of course, that's, that's general fund, and that day impacted it because, you know, of course, hotels, most of them shut down, and travel and everything else, especially during stay-at-home order. It's came back somewhat, but it's definitely down and projected to be down for 2021. Interest income, we went from getting over 2%, doing pretty good and upped, and now we have to pay the bank to keep our money just about, so it's not good there. Gas taxes, you know, this is the, gas tax was just increased, and we conservatively estimated how much we were going to budget for that gas tax, and glad we did because we ended up being short $500,000. There is other things, I'll show you here soon, that how we still made up for gas tax. Property taxes, that was a hit just because of 2019 tornado. It really didn't have to do, but the timing of which, we weren't sure what that number was going to be, and then when it came to light, what, about $416,000. Now, we're bouncing back some of that in 2021 because those homes have been rebuilt and fixed and repaired, and so they got their year worth of reduction in property taxes, and now it'll be making its way back. Parks, senior center and parks fees, and those are mostly activity fees and revenue, you know, for programming. Parks Department, just to give you an idea, funds 85, 90% of their programming is done by fees and supported. So, you know, 85, 90% of the parks programming you see is self-supported, so it's really good. But we did lose that, but we did, of course, cut the expenses of the program, not having them. Golf, I mentioned, food and beverage, there's, you know, canceled events from golf outings, food and beverages, you know, weddings, I mean, you name it, all of that was also a loss. So you're talking about $1.6 million in revenues lost throughout different, various funds throughout this time. During the shutdown, all nonessential employees worked from home during that period of time when the stay-at-home order was in effect, but we ensured that city services were maintained. We did close public facilities, including City Hall for a period of time, and then reopen them. Buildings and public places, you know, we closed playgrounds, shelters, rentals, you know, CI Beaver Hall, of course, golf club, golf course closed for about two weeks itself. City council meetings were held virtually, that was fun. People only knew, that's not the easiest thing to do, but that was fun. Additional cleaning had to be provided at all facilities. I mean, everywhere you look, you have a hand sanitation, we have people, public service guys going around spraying every single day, bombing, different things, and anytime there's a COVID employee or COVID employee spouse or child or anything that there's reported, everything gets extra clean for that, around that person and around that facility. So a lot of things that just, you didn't think about. Touchless technologies has been installed throughout city facilities, soap dispensers, toilets, sinks, hand sanitizers, a lot of this is CARES funding, that we're able to use this. Ionizers have been added to the HVAC mechanical systems in every city building, so including City Hall, it has an ionizer connected to the HVAC mechanical. Definitely at the senior center, senior center also has these automatic temperature-taking machines that's going to, we took extra care with the senior center, knowing that basically, since that's definitely a population that we need to protect. Protection of all staff and residents will continue on a daily basis during the pandemic. City changes, communities, Beaver Creek elected officials responded efficiently and effectively with changing mandates. Again, every day was a different story with something else that came up. The city shows its resilience in providing virtual programs to keep residents engaged during the stay-at-home order, Green County Public Health Department restrictions. So the seniors, they offered virtual exercise classes on YouTube, the recreation weekly roundup emails, collection of resources, links, activities that people could do at home. So they were really, especially the senior center staff, they're tremendous, and they were doing everything they could during the time that they were at work, even when they were on the stay-at-home order, they were working from home, doing the contacts and stuff up until the point of layoff. Virtual wellness walkers program, they had egg decorating contests, continued senior transportation as doctor offices for a period of time. So at first, we continued the transportation, staff was actually, our transportation at senior centers ran by volunteers, supported by volunteers, as many things are in the city. Mayor Stone is one of our drivers, so how would you like to be transported around by the mayor of the city? Some people might be shocked, but that is, he's a great, one of our bus drivers, usual bus driver. So during that period of time, staff had to take over because of volunteers, again, not knowing everything, and of course, our volunteers, most of them for the seniors are elderly, so they're at risk. So our staff went to a limited transportation with staff doing doctor visits only for a period of time. Then when the senior center got down to the point of having to close, we temporarily halted it, but then staff connected riders with other local transportation resources, including Green Cats and different things for those. But at that point in time, doctors' offices were shutting down, hospitals were not doing any kind of elective surgeries, so it was, felt like the need was still being met through other means. We engaged the community with senior center drive-through events when unable to open at the senior center. They really enjoyed that, from meals and a whole bunch of other activities. Switching gears, the police department transitioned from normal operations to limited operations during the initial onset of COVID-19, and of course, numerous of the events, you know, the activities were canceled, the open house, that's a joint City Hall open house we normally have, and Safety Town, of course, was canceled, that kids really love and enjoy that, and has a good use of teaching kids safety. Events will return hopefully in 2021, provided we can conduct it safely, so we will just see. But many things like that just had to be canceled. Touch on technology, one of the things during this time, it really pushed us on technology, which is good, that's something I've been pushing since I've got here four years ago now, and we've really made huge strides, so this year, two more huge strides came. MyPay is a payroll system implemented to allow staff to view payroll information online, creating a paperless environment. So when I first got here, everybody was still getting paper checks and paper pay stubs, no longer. Now it's all online, no, all paperless. So, and it's nice, too, because they can log in and see a paycheck from three months ago if they want to, and print it out at their leisure, so makes it really handy. Bamboo HR is a software program, increases efficiency in automating the hiring process. Again, this was paid for through CARES, but this is where, you know, of course, you can apply online, but then all your paper processing, if you're a full-time person, what's your selection of health insurance, what's your taxes going to be, what's your, you know, information, emergency contact, all those forms that you have to file out, fill out. Normally, they would have to come, and you'll, our HR manager would sit before them and have them go through all the paperwork. Now, all this will be done before they hit our door. So again, paperless, you know, phone call if need be, email if need be to help explain something, but, you know, this is particularly important during our seasonal employees, because we have 70-plus, you know, 80, we have that job fair every single year for that, we, you know, golf course, parks and rec, our maintenance staff, all depend heavily on seasonal employees, and this is going to be a way to safely and more efficiently get all the paperwork out of the way as we move forward. Just two things here, and I'll mention this back in 2020, when I get to 2021, Dude Solutions will continue to be vital in 2021, and budget software will also be in 2021 that we'll be looking at. Street projects continue to aggressively pursue and receive grant monies from federal, state, and local sources. This was a record-setting infrastructure and capital improvement year, record-setting in the middle of a pandemic. It was the busiest construction season we probably ever had, especially with grant funding. Of course, it does show our dependency on grant funding for infrastructure because it was huge. In 1997 through, we already have been awarded some future grants of 2025, we have $94.7 million in grant funding for streets and infrastructure projects. It's huge. We did, one of the reasons you saw I said 500,000 lost in gas tax money, one of the things we had that helped us move forward, continue to move forward, number one, if it was a grant funding, we got to move forward or we lose the money, so that's one issue. But even the other projects that weren't as far as grant-funded, we felt we could move forward even with the loss of gas tax because of some lower bids that came in. So I just, a couple slides here, an update on what's going on with some of these. Dayton-Zenia Road widening. This one and Kemp Road are both grants, both big grant-funded projects, as you can see, and both going to be done fall 2021 for Dayton-Zenia and summer 2021, hopefully with Kemp Road. A lot of people, why do you start them late, and why do you, why does it take so long over two years, can't you get that done? It all has to do with grant funding, because the state fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th, and they basically spread it out over two years, so it forces us to spread it out over two years. So unfortunately, that causes us two seasons, construction seasons, for us to go on these projects. But you can see on the Dayton-Zenia, this to give you the example, the bid between what was budgeted and projected to what was the bid amount, we saved $605,000. Kemp Road, we saved $298,000. So early on, when we found out that that came, I think the contractors were hungry because of COVID and wanted the jobs, but seeing those huge bid amount savings come in gave us very good pause that we'll be okay to move forward with the projects with the gas tax being down. Kemp Road signals, that'll be February 2021, that it's all right there where it's going on, but those are road signals that are a corner of Kemp Road and North Fairfield's one, so that'll be done, the poles and the mast are up. Lock Drive Culvert, that's been completed. State Route 835 resurfacing, we would hope we would have gotten to that, we will not, but the bid came in $300,000 under, so again, but that will be, begin in spring of 2021. That'll be very nice, it's getting, and that includes the median where the concrete islands are, they're crumbling as well, that's doing all of that, so that will be very good. Colonel Glenn Highway, Streetscape, that'll come, be completed in March of 2021. I have a few pictures I'll show you, it's looking very good, a couple things, including a welcome sign coming in to the city, and a couple other more bricks and some other things. Curb and resurfacing, that came in under $258,000 as well. The excess amount of that, of course, returns to the fund balance. So a couple pictures, if you haven't been out there, I travel these roads nearly every day, Kemp Road and Dayton-Zenia, because I live on the west side, so to speak, so anytime I have to come east, I'm traveling either Kemp or Dayton-Zenia. So when people say, you see what's going on that road? Yes, I see it every single day, because I'm on it. Gives me good awareness and good say, hey, there's something wrong here. But Colonel Glenn, Streetscape is like you see there, it's looking real good, and that'll be done very shortly. Dayton-Zenia Road widening, again, anybody that was just here a couple years ago, you know, when the other part was tore up, it's very reminiscent of that time where it shifted, and it's not the best. You know, we'll probably have to move the barrels over just a hair, get a significant amount of snow and different things, we'll take care of that. But it's, it'll be tight, yeah, it's tight. When you pass a truck, and I'm in a big truck, you kind of get a little nervous there, so yeah, there'll be, and then you got up against guardrails and concrete barriers as well. And if you make one wrong turn, Noel's Nursery, you might have a drive-through there mistakenly, not something they want. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the 1% income tax initiative. Of course, we, remember that during 2020, a resident-led group came before City Council with the tax initiative to help with the city revenue and infrastructure issues, and initiative was passed on the, placed on the November 2020 election ballot. Results basically were the 52 against and 48 for. Compared to 13 results, 62 against and 38 for, that really gained a lot of, I think communication happened, a lot of more information came to the voters, not quite successful, but definitely an improvement. I wanted just to say, though, the income tax initiative, failure of the income tax, you know, as it, you'll hear a lot in this message tonight, it doesn't take, make the issues of the infrastructure disappear, nor does it help with the financial burden of the city services fully being on property owners. Those were the two key issues of the income tax, and that doesn't change those facts. Communication challenges due to COVID were, of course, horrendous, you couldn't get out, hard to talk person to person, which most, best form of communication is always going to be group settings. And so without that, that was hard to get a message, and social media just wasn't going to cut it. Accomplishments, you know, even with the challenges of pandemic, department staff accomplished much during the 2020. I just want to highlight a few. Finance Department, you know, received the Ohio Autor of State Award with Distinction, you know, for the city for nine consecutive years. That in itself is remarkable. But also, the finance staff had to do all the FEMA reimbursements, make sure we got everything correct with all that, so in the middle of that, now with COVID, dealing with all the CARES funding and having to balance all that, and, you know, what's the rules, what do we got to do with this? It's been a horrendous time for the Finance Department when it comes to all this funding that's coming, and the rules and restrictions, and he, the Finance Department, Mr. Casera have definitely earned, will deserve the State Award with Distinction after managing the funding for this year. Parks and Rec and Culture completed ADA accessibility audit of all the parks and facilities and created a transition plan. They installed the ADA dock at Dominic Laffino Park and installed additional play equipment for two to five years old at Gerspacher Park, crack sealed coating through Mountain Zion Cemetery. If you haven't been there, you need to get out to Mount Zion before it gets too cold and snowy. Completed construction of the columbarium at Mountain Zion and held an open house. Right now, also, part of 2021, we'll be updating, I'll say it lightly, we'll be updating the shack that is at Mountain Zion Park. That's basically what it is. It's an embarrassment that we have customers that go into, I call it a cooter's garage, that's about what it looked like, a block building that wasn't heated, was heated but not air-conditioned, and just very poor representation of the city. So that's going to be coming forward. We created even more challenges for the recreation staff, events and programs, virtual programs were created during the shutdown, when mandates began to lift, and started back up in-person programming. So this was monumental, tasks were accomplished for staff to begin reopening and ensure that all state and public health guidelines and restrictions were met. So it was exciting when we would hear the Governor on Thursday begin to tell us and announce what things would be, begin to be allowed, you know, it seemed like it would trickle, and we'd hear about it on Thursday, and it'd be the following week before we actually got the guy, actual hard copy of the guidelines, and then we'd have to study them, and can we meet these things, can we do this thing? Can we do this thing? So we had to do a lot of research and, and be creative and staff was doing a very good job. But we were able to still have summer concert series. Hey, thinking outside about box, we asked the bands, hey, what if we just videotape you and we'll, would you be willing to do that? Yes. So we had three virtual concerts. Fourth of July fireworks. Boy, did we need that. We needed to come together as a community. We, we found a way to make it happen. And thanks to Fairfield Commons Off and the property that we were able to have that, very successful. Drive-through tri-a truck, I heard nothing but good things on the tri-a truck. People loved, thank you so much. Our kids just, you know, kids normally love to crawl all over the equipment, but not this year. They just got to see it from their car window, but they loved it still. They got them out of the house and got them to see something, a truck that they still like and will remember to crawl on next time. Senior Center Transportation restarted again with the rules. Summer day camps, we did have summer day camps, a lot less, you know, numbers, of course, but we were able to have it. We weren't able to do the field trips like we would take them and go various places, but still yet the kids had, had a good time and were safe. Senior Center staff implemented drive-through style special events, which we said, we did work with Activity Health to begin the Silver Sneakers Program that will begin in 2021. That was important as well. The Police Department was successful in earning their seventh Kalia accreditation since 1999 and their third consecutive Gold Standard Award with excellence. We have an awesome police department. You know, kudos to, to Chief Evers, who's headed towards that retirement. And we thank him for all his years of service that he did and, and keeping up with this. And I know Chief Fiorida will be right on his heels on making sure these accreditations are done. Planning and development in collaboration with the Police Department created massage establishment legislation to help curb human trafficking passed by city council. That was a great thing to happen. That really will help the city, help the police, hey, the legal massage parlors, we want you to flourish. The illegal ones, the human trafficking, get out, plain and simple. Engineering staff, oh, I skipped one thing here. So planning also updated the 2020 land use plan and saw a significant increase on online permitting. I'll talk to that later, but that was just in time that we had the program up and running in 2009 for the online permitting to, because it was heavily used in 2020. Engineering staff accomplished the repair and resurfacing of over eight point nine seven centerline miles of roadway as part of the 2020 annual resurfacing program and completed the construction of lock drive culvert replacement. You see all the projects there. I'm not going, Shakertown Road Extension, that was huge. All those, Old Mill Lane Bridge and replacement, and of course, the 2020 curb replacement and resurfacing program. Public Service Division implemented citywide COVID sanitation and prevention protocols. So really, it fell on public service because they maintain the buildings to begin. We got to clean everything. We got to put the sanitation systems out. We got to do all this. So they have done an excellent job. I applaud public services for keeping employees safe. Continue searching opportunities for networking. Of course, we're always going to do that with other communities, include shared services. We were a 2020 Tree City USA. We met the requirements. They didn't have the service that we normally would have in, what was that, May, April, somewhere around there, but we did meet the requirements. Continue to build Dude's Solutions Asset Essentials Platform. This is something I'll talk about here in a minute, but implemented parts inventory features to increase expense tracking. So that's again, in what we call Dude's Solutions, which has many different programs within it, but we'll refer ease of use, we'll call it Dude's Solutions. That's the overall program. As of November 30th, golf had, this is amazing, golf had twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty rounds, which is up forty-four hundred rounds up from nineteen, with being shut down for two weeks and additional two weeks at least of being limited play. Because when the rules came out, one per cart and, and the distancing and the scrambles, where you couldn't do scrambles a certain way, it was really, then conversations began to have with the Public Health Department and they really helped us. Mayor Stone was in my office one day and it's just a testimony to, to, to Public Health, Melissa Howell, our Public Health Commissioner. I said, well, let's, let's call her. And I called her on my cell phone, sat there and Mayor and I talked to her and explained. She goes, sure, I think that's okay. Bam, got it done. So very thankful for Public Health on working with the city on things that, what we can do to maintain safety. This is just a few hundreds of the accomplishments over the last year. The detailed report that of accomplishments will have everything. Again, this is just short-cutting it, but look forward at Beaver Creek, Ohio.gov coming up soon. So the executive summary of the 2021 appropriation budget fiscal year January 1st through December 31st of 2021. This is for, to meet the section of, in our charter, 10.10, presenting and considering the budget, the annual municipal budget on an annual basis. So this meets a criteria for that. And the budget processes in the past, I just want to say that, you know, we always strive that I press the department heads, we all press each other really, that the level, to maintain the level high services and residents have been accustomed to, but how can we do it better? How can we do it more fiscally sound? How can we do it by sharing of resources or, you know, what else can we do? No rock is not uncovered, stone uncovered if we can. Involved in developing creative solutions, like again, from technology to efficiency, department reorganizations that we had, we had in planning department this year, aggressively pursuing grant opportunities, of course. City Council's policy of maintaining the minimum reserve balance of 20%, that has been achieved. And just for the public's interest, the public budget work sessions were conducted on November 16th and 17th with staff and city council, and it included citizen input. So all this information from the budget and all that, the budget and the capital budget, the five-year capital plan will all be online this week. And it is a line-by-line item. If you haven't seen our budget, it is a, literally a line item by line item explaining what's in that line item. And it's good for people to see and we have a PDF version of it that is pretty user-friendly that you can go and go through the document if you're looking for something specific. All right, so here's a snapshot of the summary of revenue and expenditures, and this is in the millions. As you can see, the fund balances, the percentage of fund balances, except for the capital improvement budgets, which are lower than the 20% because we try to spend everything in those for the most part. When you look at, you say, oh, twenty-seven point five percent in the general fund. Wow, that, you know, you're only talking a projected fund balance of 1.4. When you're talking a whole city budget of 40 million, that's not much cushion. So that's not a whole lot. And, and the same is true with the street levy budget that shows thirty-five point four percent. You know, that's only 1.69 million dollars budget in that. We have to hold back because we have grant cash matches and projects that cost significantly. So there are years that we have to hold back some because the following year, just like 2020 was, was a huge record-breaking year. We have to hold back for that next huge record-breaking year or project that we do. So, so that's why some of those balances are like that. But we'll get into more of that here in a second. So revenue by category. Property taxes, of course, you know, this is going to show that the city's reliance on property taxes and grants to generate revenues necessary to maintain operations and fund the capital improvement program. Of course, property tax being the largest, 21.7 million or approximately 58.3% of the total revenue budget. This represents a 2.7 increase over last year. And I will say, part of that 2.7 is a rebound from the tornado, not, and there is some increase from appraisals. But let me explain to everybody that's watching and may not understand. Despite the increase in property values, voted levy revenues remain relatively the same. Ninety percent of our funding that we receive in property taxes, ninety percent of those property taxes are voted levies. Voted levies, our city voted levies, do not change with appraisals. So if you have a 500% in your home value and you think the city's getting all that 500% increase, all those, the street levy, police levy, park levy, they do not get a dime more from your appraisal. Okay, that's important for people to understand. The inside millage in the general fund does, but it's, it's a relatively small amount. And just because you get a 500% increase doesn't mean we get a 500% revenue increase. That's not the way it works anyway. But just wanted to clarify that. Intergovernmental revenues at 5.4 million is the second largest revenue, and this source includes like local government funds, cigarette tax, liquor and beer licenses, hotel motel when, when that, when we have some, gasoline and motor vehicle tax and fees. The pandemic has reduced revenue in the local government funds, hotel, of course, motel tax, consumption fees and such as fuel taxes and interest earnings. So it did impact intergovernmental revenues. Grant revenues is the third largest revenue source comprising of 1.87 million or 5% of the budget. And of that, 1.3 million of ODOT grants for the two major street infrastructure projects. So what I wanted to say there, that is small potatoes this year. In 2020, so keep that in mind, you had 1.87 million or 5% of the budget. Last year, even after deducting FEMA money that we were expecting, take FEMA out, our grant funding was 6.8 million, which is 15.9% of our total budget. So again, this year, you know, grants are a little particular in nature, will have higher years, lower years. I mean, we still got two major projects of grant funding projects that are happening and we couldn't take on anymore right now until those are completed anyway. So to make up the remaining, revenue includes charges for services, interfund transfers, license fines, fees, special assessments and other miscellaneous revenues. When we go to expenditures by function, as you can see, the street and capital, that's, street funds are, are the largest. The total budget's 40.2 million or approximately 7.2 million decrease over the 2020 adopted. Okay, so a big part of that is grant funding that did not come in. This larger decrease is due to 3 million in budgeted FEMA fund that we won't get again related to a tornado and a significant decrease in the capital improvement budgeted for 2021, budgeted in 2020, actually. In the 2021 proposed budget by function, we said street, 16.7 million dollars, 40.2% of the total budget. This includes 11.41 for infrastructure improvements, 5.4 million less than 2020. So there it is, right there. And that's not including the other three millions in FEMA that's not there. So you add that, those two items right there, you're over eight million dollars difference. Public safety represents the second largest portion of the budget at 11.34 million or 28.2% of the total budget. As well as Parks and Rec represents 3.61 million or 9% of the budget. And the remaining 9.15 million is comprised of the golf course debt service and the general fund. As you can see, those are much smaller numbers. So when you get to expenditures by category, the largest category is wages and benefits. Well, that kind of makes sense. We're a service, so-called service industry. So wages and benefits accounting for 16.6 million or 41.3% of the city's total budget includes salary increase of union and non-union of two to two and a half percent and a blended health insurance rate increase of 12.43%. Now, mind you that if, in the budget hearings, we had Mr. Casera speak on this and we've been in the last five years anywhere at 2%, 3%, 4% increases in health insurance, we've done really well. We will have to keep a close eye on this as this continues to increase. We will have to look at what options are out there for us to hold back those costs. But this one year of that is over, if you look over a five-year period of time, we've done really, really well. The second largest component of the budget is, of course, capital, which is 10.04 million, 24.9% of the budget. And the majority of these expenses relate to the street funds, which includes dedicated capital improvements as part of the five-year capital improvement plan. This was 13.72 million in 2020. So that just tells you right there, $3 million less than 2020. Contracted is the third largest category representing 8.45 million or 21% of the budget. Some of the larger items budget include contractual include like resurfacing of the streets and curb repair, 2.95 million, increase due to delay in scope of project last year and receipt of reimbursement from FEMA. So we're able to try to get that back on track. The other thing I want to state very strongly on that is that started, we started in 2020. This was a change in our curb, our street repaving and curb replacement program. Starting in 2020, the curb program became directly linked to the streets that we are repaving. And in 2021, we will be doing more curbs to do the curbs associated with the streets that will be paved in 2022. So in other words, we're going to get ahead of the curve because it's hard to do the street repaving and the curb at the same time. So we're going to be, since FEMA caused us to get a little bit behind and we have the FEMA reimbursement, now we're going to get a year ahead of the curb so that, you know, we'll always be, try to be a year ahead of that program. Our point there is we will not put down good asphalt over bad curbs, plain and simple. And interfund charges for indirect costs is part of contractual. Other professional services including legal fees, prosecution services, liability and property insurance, Green County Combined Health Services, animal control, audit costs, recreational programming and the in-touch newsletter. All right, so the budget also, a few highlights, also includes a reduction of three full-time, we, we said this, and one part-time employees and a food and beverage division of golf courses, was a result of limited service levels related to the pandemic and reorganization of that service sector. The budget also includes a hiring of a full-time communications manager to increase communications with the residents and employees and with the, and also with the reorganization of planning and development department. A part-time planning secretary is budgeted to create greater efficiency and redistribute, redistribute, if I can talk, I need some water, services to best serve residents. What's basically happened in planning in a nutshell is that with the passing of Jeff McGrath and the promotion of Randy Burkett to planning director, that left a planning position open and the thought of code enforcement needing more assistance. So we have a hybrid. There will be a zoning supervisor that will be part zoning, code enforcement and part picking up some of the planning functions of permitting and certain things that will be able to be done there. That's the best of both worlds. That shows a shift in what we're doing, we're, to our needs. It also overall is a budget reduction. With the delay of many capital equipment purchases during the last two years, the city has dedicated 1.7 million in replacement equipment and approximately 1 million in facility maintenance and improvements. I'm going to talk about that here in a second. Excuse me, I did need some water. The city continues to increase operational efficiencies with the replacement of several critical information technology improvements to create the city's IT storage capacity and to increase speed. So the city is going to continue to review additional software enhancements and continue to aggressive programs in line with the city's overall objective increasing operational efficiency. So we are doing a couple, one big improvement of our, a hard line wire in between here and the upgrade in our, some of our storage. Now, when I talk about all these programs that we, we are getting though, I will say this, every one of them are web-based, meaning they're cloud-based, so we're not taking in most of the stuff, but there are stuff that we have here that are still required to take onsite, much of the police stuff that we have to have onsite. So, but you know, there is a cost for storage in the cloud as well, but then you don't, and you still pay a maintenance fee. So sometimes I argue with myself on whether or not which way's better on that, but you don't have to necessarily have a full-time IT person necessarily if you don't have hard, hardware as much. Park projects for 2021 budgeted playground replacement, Grange View Acres, bridge replacement, dam safety repairs at Dominic Laffino Dock, bridge improvement at Merrick Park, a connection to playground at Summerfield Park, that means making that sidewalk, that'd be nice. to the playground at Summerfield Park, that means making that sidewalk, that'd be nice. Councilmember Garcia will like that one. Yes, that'd be good. Right now, it's just kind of dirt, gravel, dirt, mulch a little bit. A connection to the playground, Summerfield Park, as we said, and new walking path looping, if I get it right, Vergilato Park? I hope I said that. If I said it wrong, I'm sorry, are also budgeted. Phase two deferred maintenance plan that replaces two of the 12 HVAC units at Senior Center. This is where I want to, I'll talk to you about that. Remember that as a point. There's 12 of them. Without having a budgeted plan, when 12 go out at one time costing 13, $15,000, $15,000 apiece, because, you know, the building was built or rehabbed at the same time, so all of them age at the same time. The budget includes 50,000 of phase four of six for the cart path resurfacing program of the golf course. So we're glad to get to maintain the golf course as well. Also includes 20,000 for installation of driving range netting to capture golf balls well before they reach 675 and the surrounding holes. Lord help us if we have golf balls bouncing on 675. Don't want that. And switching to some street projects here, I'm not going to go long on these, but you just say Indian Ripple Sidewalks, that's a construction to begin May 2021. County Line Road widening, that's being worked on. You guys seen right-of-way acquisitions and stuff that's been happening this year. So that's, construction's definitely going to begin in June of 2021. And that is, when we talk about cooperation and working with other cities, there's a fine purpose of it. It's another county, but it's Kettering. Kettering came to us, and they said, "Yeah, we're doing this." And we said, "Oh, back the boat up." We said, "We want to do it with you," not, you know. There were some other things said as well, while I won't go into. But it ended up being a good project, their lead on this, but they were going to widen just their side, and it makes no sense to do that. So that's, we entered into an agreement with them, and some grant funds, as you see, $930,000. They love grant funds, love it when you have jurisdictions sharing on a project. And then you can see the rest of some of the other that are not grant-funded, but, and the side path, which I mentioned, and curbs and annual resurfacing of the 2.95 million, which I've already went into. So lots going on next year still with projects, but all of those projects just listed, but remembering Kemp Road's got to be finished, all those, you know, Dayton-Zenia, all those ones that we will still be needing to finish as well. So looking ahead, you know, goals, each staff continues to find creative solutions, implementing technology and innovations, researching and implementing shared resources, identifying efficiencies, improvements, again, reorganizing departments, whatever it takes, pursuing grant opportunities, and anything we can do to be more cost-effective and efficient. The city manager is my role. I will continue to ensure that the city council's policy directives are implemented promptly and efficiently, develop strategies for, provide long-term operational stability, sustainability alternatives to address the funding and timing of the city's levies, and continue to find ways to expand shared services and review consolidation strategies and efficiencies to reduce costs. Increase communication presence with the local media, cable access channels, newsletters, social media sites, effectively notify the community on what's happening. You know, we're including, you know, adding the communications manager, so it's not just about social media. But, you know, since I got here, I mean, we've increased 100-fold on not just social media, but press releases, in the paper, all those kinds of things. We have good rapport with the news, but adding that communication manager, that that is all they do is tout and solve and hear and be able to get feedback. There's so much that goes unsaid. We take it for granted in our circle that public knows so much about what we're doing. And at simple times, it's just not accurate. It's our perception because we're in it from day to day. But this will definitely increase communications to the residents. We need a further advanced technology to increase operational efficiencies. The police department, hopefully will do Safety Town, educate preschool children about safety, conduct open house, hopefully, and national night out. Planning department staff will work to compile the 2020 decennial census data to make the in-depth analysis and growth trends in the city from 1980 to 2020. So I don't know exactly what the timing of when that data is released. I imagine it'd be in 2021 at some point in time, but that's going to be crunching the numbers and seeing what changed in our demographics in every way. So that's slicing and dicing of the information will be up and coming. Work with planning commission, city council, and affect property owners to correct zoning map inconsistencies. Planning department will still do this, and approve an official zoning map. Parks and Recreation will work on Beaver Creek Historical Society along, this is exciting, finally, with McGill Smith Punchin, if I can say that, architects to design a historically accurate replacement of the Tobias Zimmer barn. Construction anticipated for spring of 2021. Of course, those who don't know, the tornado wiped out the Zimmer barn and literally destroyed it, and so this is the rebuilding of that, finally. Silver Sneakers program will be implemented at the Senior Center. Expand culture and arts program with one new cultural event or program, hopefully. Roll out public web-based searchable cemetery map. Again, technology here for Mount Zion, Ailey, and Hawker cemeteries. It's called Grave Discover, so that'll be a nice feature. I mean, we literally, how do you tell who's buried here? There's a filing cabinet, and about five years ago, good luck at filing the cards. They weren't even, anyway, much improved. This will add even better on top of that. And update the Mount Zion Cemetery building, which I stated earlier. All right, so infrastructure and capital forecasting. I want to spend just a couple of minutes that I have left here. 2018, 2020, I talked about Dude Solutions. That's the program we started in 2018. It first started in public service because it's our work order system in 2018. You want something done to a building, a work order is done. You want something done to a pothole, a work order is done. Earlier, you heard me talk about inventory and things like that. Well, this is a system where they can begin to put in the information to the work order to what, what kind of material it took to do the order, so you can begin capturing costs with the work order as well. Public Services conducted a facility condition assessment, maintenance, and replacement schedules for the city assets, much unfunded. They did that in 2019. We have in Dude Solutions, it's called Assets Essential, Assets Essential, I'll get it right, has all our building data in it. What I mean, how old's a roof? When's it supposed to be replaced? How old's the windows? What's the lifespan of the windows, the HVAC systems, the electrical, the plumbing, the hot water heaters, the, you know, all, what is the regular routine maintenance? How often should the filters be replaced? How often should this be updated? How often should the asphalt be paved or sealed? Has all that kind of data in there. Unfortunately, that's a good lot of data, but fortunately, we don't have staffing. What's data? After a year or two, three, gets old if you don't update it. So we're going to be working this year to get the updated water heaters, the updated driveways that we sealed, the updated water heaters we replaced, trying to maintain the amount we put in, did in 2020, so that it will be accurate. It's a struggle. I will not kid you, that's just for our buildings and infrastructure pieces for, related to facilities, okay? Public Services, excuse me, let me go on. I had just told you about the implemented parts inventory features to increase expense tracking and started data points descriptions in 2020. I'll tell you what data points are. Data points are, we have this where eventually we want that the system is connected with GIS and mapping, that the vans or drone does the laser, tells you what condition, how many miles lending your feet, of sidewalks, curbs, road signs, light poles, all that, your whole asset inventory. Then you can build projects with it, and so you could say, oh, it graded as poor, it graded as good, it graded as whatever. You then have to maintain that data, or it's a waste of the data going in. Right now, we have spreadsheets, Excel spreadsheets, estimates on this, estimates on that. Engineering has done an outstanding job. Let me, let me say, say something about this. About 17, 18 years ago, my father and I built a shed, 10x10 shed. You know what I built it on? I didn't have a plan. I took a piece of paper, 10x10, two by fours, 16 on center. I figured my pitch and my roof, calculated how many I would need. We built the shed, not a problem, still standing. I see it. I don't live there anymore, but I still see it every now and then. So I didn't do too bad of a job. Nobody got killed during it. But with that and a 10x10 shed, maybe in 1980, the city was a 10x10 shed. We are the second largest city by square miles in infrastructure in this region. We can no longer operate like we're building a 10x10 shed. We're building the infrastructure we have, we need the architect plans, we need the blueprint plans, we need to have the data in order to know what we need, when we need it, why we need it, and to be able to prioritize the projects as well. So in 2021, Dude Solutions complete data points, that's our first part of the year, we'll go complete the data points. And what that is, is just telling, we have to hire this out, and the company does this, that they know what kind of data that the machine captures, and they take Dude Solutions, and they map what data points we need to capture, and this data point needs to go to this field, and so forth. That's in the simplistic terms I can, I can understand, okay? So we're going to do that by mid-year, and then after that, we'll see what kind of funding we have on whether or not we go out for bid and are able to actually begin the data gathering of the data for the system. And again, I said that includes road conditions, side paths, curbs, signs, poles, culverts, bridges, stormwater. We won't be able to do the entire city at one time. It'll be cost prohibitive for the first year, no doubt, and maybe two, three years, we'll have to see, and what priority council wants to put on getting that done. And of course, in 2021, stormwater project analysis, we have budgeted for that, and that's something that I support that we move forward on again. I hope that somehow, when we go out for that bid for the stormwater project, that we include maybe an electronic way of capturing that, that that data could be put into our Dude Solutions. So we'll go see if that's possible, instead of just a book that we have to put in the data. We'll see. The city's aging infrastructure needs, including streets, stormwater, sidewalks, curbs, city facilities, and more, will continue into future years. Continue identification of infrastructure needs is a priority. And additional funding and staff will be required to maintain the data and the program systems created, not to mention the infrastructure projects that are a result of doing it. Infrastructure needs will continue to increase in cost, posing critical funding challenges. It doesn't get cheaper, it gets more expensive. If your backyard or your road looked like this, I think you'd be angry. When they call, we say we have no stormwater funding for your backyard. We do not have funding for those types of purposes. If it's related to a street, we can to limit with the funding we have to try to, you know, sometimes it's like digging a ditch even deeper, but sometimes that just will not work. And especially with the volume of water that some of these, where it's coming from. The five-year capital plan, council at the budget time was presented with five-year capital plan that includes all those areas. Just wanted to mention that we have, we have talked about that and went through that. While the improvement projects listed in the plan are feasible, you know, during that five years, they're feasible because we're budgeting from what we have. Given the current grant and city financial resources that we know, the capital improvement plan should not be considered to be a comprehensive project list that meets all outstanding needs for the city. It's not. There are known unfunded projects listed in various sections of the capital projects, but there are many that are known that are not listed. We simply don't have staff to go, time to go and do a project for all unfunded and get it estimated and get the, it's, we don't have staffing for that to do something we know that can't be funded, just like the stormwater projects that we have had on the books since the last 1983 study, that probably two out of dozens and dozens of projects have only been done in the 40 years. So as proofless to mention, additional funding and staff will be required to maintain the data and the program systems created, again, not to mention the infrastructure projects as a result. New this year, shifting gears, and I can provide you guys copies, any hard copies emails. This is, we quickly did a map, thanks to Randy Burkett, planning department, did a map, and this is just our list of properties, and I put them into certain categories, facilities and buildings. There's other because it's just some land that we own that is probably for drainage and things like that, and then you can see our parks that we have. So it's just an interesting, interesting thing. And this also provides all the parcel numbers, and you can look it up on the GIA, the county's GIA system. It's pretty interesting to see. All right, and tend to our employees, you know, we have some dedicated employees like no other here in the city. I'm very proud of them. The employees, like the city Beaver Creek staff, are the foundation of any successful workplace. And I would like to thank staff for their dedication and hard work this past year, especially, I mean, they have went out of their way. They, when we were shut down, they were itching to, what can I do? What can I do? What can I do? Their priority was still, yes, they were worried, just like all of us were worried about catching the coronavirus or their family members, but they were worried about, what can I do? I need to help the residents of Beaver Creek. I need to help the seniors. I need to help, you know, whoever. And throughout this time, it's important that we support each other in the community. Thank you for creating, your creative outside of the box thinking, resourcefulness and willingness to keep moving the city forward. And our promise, and my promise to residents is the city will continue to serve residents efficiently and in the most cost-effective manner for services desired by the residents and for which we are able to be supported. It's an honor to serve the residents of this great city of Beaver Creek. And here's looking, hopefully, to sunny 2021 instead of a mass 2020. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, council.
Well, thank you very much, Pete. Anybody have any questions of Pete? As you said earlier, we kind of understand this because we've worked with you trying to develop a lot of it over the year, and it, but the public is the one that really needs to, if they don't understand, please come and ask, or get copies on the internet, get a, go on the internet, study it. It's, it's, it's important to understand how your community functions.
It is, and one thing that, if I just end with this, it, you know, good luck, call the state, call the feds, get ahold of somebody. We're 100% different. Where your local government? You call here, people are shocked at times. There's times my, my assistant and Diane would be gone, I'm answering the city manager line. Can I speak to the city manager? You're speaking to him. What? And how easy accessible city council is, too. So it's, it's not the big federal, it's not the big state governments, you know, we're, we're residents just like are the residents here, and we're very approachable. I know council is, and my staff and myself are approachable. If you have questions and concerns, please talk to us, and we'll provide the information as needed.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone have anything to add? Before we move on? All right, we will move on. Thanks, Pete. Next section on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is Resolution 20-45, which is accepting the 2021 budget. Do we have any discussion on the budget?
Your honor, I've moved to approve 2045 resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-45, accepting the 2021 budget. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Vail?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 20-33, which is the annual appropriations. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, you got to read that, don't you? Please.
This is an ordinance approving annual appropriations for the city of Beaver Creek, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021, and authorizing the transfer ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and authorizing the transfer of monies.
All right, thank you. And you've seen some of that tonight in the state of the city, uh, where we expect to be spending money. So, uh, any further discussion? Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, wait. I'm gonna ask, this is an ordinance, so I'm gonna open this up to the public. Uh, we will accept public input at this time if there's anyone here that would like to address council on this ordinance. Seeing none, we will move on, and I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-three, the annual appropriations. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next is Resolution twenty dash forty-six.
This is a resolution to set and approve the two thousand twenty-one wage for city manager and clerk of council.
Thank you. Any discussion? We were all involved in the evaluations and the recommendations, so...
Move to approve Resolution twenty forty-six?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty dash forty-six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next is ordinance twenty dash thirty-four.
This is an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and to amend ordinances nineteen dash thirty, twenty dash zero six, twenty dash zero seven, twenty dash fourteen, twenty dash twenty-three, twenty dash thirty, and twenty dash thirty-two.
Hmm. Okay.
Yeah, that's it. For the last time.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, and members of city council. This is, uh, our last additional appropriation and certification for the year. Uh, the, what you have before you is, uh, we actually received a third distribution of the CARES money. This was, uh, money that was distributed originally to all the municipalities, townships, villages in Green County. And at a certain date, I think it was November twentieth, had they not used it, they sent it back to Green County who redistributed it based on population. So, uh, we have to certify that amount of one forty-six or eight? One forty-eight, four twenty, uh, so we can appropriate it and certify the revenue so that we can utilize that for the, uh, CARES funding, for the reimbursement of the COVID pandemic expenses. And also, uh, we received a forty thousand dollar grant from Adult Day Service and Senior Center, uh, provided relief, uh, organization, and they gave us a grant for, dedicated specifically for the senior center. So that was for forty thousand dollars. Again, will be used specifically for improvements at the senior center to, uh, increase our public safety during the pandemic and in the future. So, uh, we also need to certify and appropriate that money to be used by the end of the year, uh, for those purposes.
All right, thank you very much. This is an ordinance, the first reading. Is there a, uh? It is a single reading, but it is the first as well. But, uh, so then, is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-four?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oh, sorry, you got a roll call again.
Roll call.
Well, we'll back up. I do have the motion and the second. Will we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And lastly, end of this section is ordinance twenty dash thirty-five.
This is the first reading of an ordinance repealing section ninety-six zero four, removal of ice and snow of chapter ninety-six, streets and sidewalks of the Beaver Creek codified ordinances.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. Happy to be before you this evening. Uh, ordinance ninety-six point oh four requires the removal of snow and ice by the, uh, lot or land bordering, uh, on any street with grade or pavement, uh, to remove the snow or ice from a sidewalk or graded paved area within the first twelve hours after, uh, daylight following or during the fall of snow. Since this ordinance has not been enforced, uh, and needlessly subject citizens to criminal citations for noncompliance, uh, furthermore, the city would struggle to and be subject to the same law, would, would, uh, struggle to be able to remove the snow, uh, without additional staffing or additional finances. Uh, we checked with our local law or our insurance provider, and they determined that there's no additional liability for the city on city-owned property, um, whether we remove the snow or don't remove the snow. Uh, staff is recommending repealing ordinance ninety-six point zero four.
Thank you. Uh, this is the first reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, any discussion? It was, uh, very appropriate for a citizen, uh, to bring this to our attention, and, uh, we're doing our due diligence to, uh, to address that. So, with that, I'll accept a motion to move this on to the second reading.
So move.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty dash thirty-five on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right. Now we move on to council time, and we gotta see who can outdo the city manager here.
That would be a challenge.
Charles, I think you could do it. All right. Why don't we start to my far left? Councilmember George, would you like to, uh?
Oh, sure. Well, thank you, mayor. Uh, I've really only got a couple of things. I'd just like to, um, really, uh, thank, uh, thank council for your support during my first full year in office, um, as, as we have our last meeting of the year. Uh, I'd like to thank the city staff for your support and perseverance through the coronavirus pandemic and, and all the, um, adjustments and flexibility you've had to have this year. I, I definitely appreciate that and thank all the citizens for their dedication, um, to kind of abiding by new rules that we've all had to do and, and get through. So, I echo the city manager's final statement. I, I pray that, uh, twenty twenty-one is a far different year than twenty twenty. I think we'll get there. I think we'll still have to be very flexible as we move into, uh, spring and early summer, but I, I do see the light at the end of the tunnel. So that's, that's that. Speaking of lights, and I think the city manager might be talking about some sparkling lights, uh, throughout the town, but now's a good time, you know, with, with the pandemic, put your kids and family in the car and drive around and, and see Christmas lights. I know that we've done that a couple of times and really have been enjoying it, and I know the city's got, uh, a great light display for everyone. And finally, just happy holidays, be safe, have, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and that'll be it.
Thank you. Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, although tangential to our work, I'd like to say thank you to, uh, Superintendent Alton, uh, the board and all of the teachers in the school district, simply having school this year, uh, in post and has been tremendous. I know so many teachers worked very, very hard to, to have that, uh, working. And I'd like to, uh, echo Councilmember Bales's statement, sentiments about the city. I'd like to thank the city manager for the very thorough and in-depth report. The professor in me is thinking about challenging the, the time length, but I might be in trouble for that. Uh, but, uh, but in all seriousness, um, I cannot speak highly enough of the staff, all the work that's done. It's really absolutely terrific, and thank you for the in-depth, uh, state of the city address today. Had the chance to, uh, address the Rotary Club of Be, Beaver Creek about a week and a half ago, and that was a really enjoyable event for me. I want to thank all of the organizers, uh, and for all of the great work that the Rotary Club does, uh, in the city. And then finally, uh, to go with Councilmember Bales again, the Christmas lights have been fantastic, uh, in a lot of different neighborhoods. We've had a lot of fun with the kids, uh, driving through, uh, a lot of different neighborhoods of Beaver Creek. So I'd like to thank everyone for putting up the lights. Uh, Merry Christmas to all, uh, happy holidays, Happy New Year. Uh, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So I had our last MVRPC meeting for the year last week. Our next one will be February fourth, so we will not meet in January. At this most recent meeting, we discussed some new online content, including MVRC's Public Engagement Toolkit, as well as some updates to the tornado recovery dashboard. So if anyone's interested, go ahead and check that out. Some interesting information on there. We also had a brief update. Uh, back in November, we had an ODOT rep discuss distracted driving. And there is now Senate Bill two eighty-five, which is called Hands Free Ohio, to prohibit drivers from having any physical contact with your phones. And this would be now a primary offense for drivers. Uh, so definitely keep an eye on that. I know twenty-five states have already enacted something similar, and I think they've seen about a fifteen percent decrease in accidents because of that. This is still awaiting a hearing, so nothing's been finalized on this, but I think this is in response to some of the governor's questions as far as distracted driving goes, making sure that we're doing as much as possible in the state. So keep an eye on that, that came up. I just want to also thank staff. I know our city manager mentioned it, but they really have gone above and beyond, especially in a year like this. And when, you know, things got shut down, they were still prompt and responding to residents as well as council alike, so thank you to all of them. Uh, and I guess to jump on the lights bandwagon, Caesar Ford Park had some really great light displays with some good music, and my son really enjoyed waving to all of the lit-up characters. So I hope everyone has a great Christmas and a great holiday, and looking forward to twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, mayor. Um, first, I'd like to thank Chief Fiorida. He was so very kind as to give me a tour of the police station. Uh, when I took office in February, everything kind of shut down very quickly, and so I was unable to get out and do the tours and see the things that I'd like to see. What I have to say is the size and facilities, um, of our police department are not of the caliber that I think our department deserves or needs. Um, and it's a shame that we aren't able to hold our open houses so that the community can kind of go out and see those things as well. So I think that's something that we definitely need to do better on. Um, as many of you know, I am very active in Kiwanis, and I am very pleased to report that we have started a key, key club successfully at the high school. So we have sixteen students that are signed up. And speaking of the lights at Wardiger Park, one of their first service projects was decorating one of the cabins there. So I encourage you all to go out, walk around, look at the lights, and there is a contest, so vote for whichever one you believe to be the most decorated, but the key club put in a lot of hard work, so. Um, I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my fellow council members. I am just so thankful to work with such a wonderful staff and work with such a great community. Um, staff has went above and beyond. You know, finance has went and made sure that we had the grants and the things that we need, and were able to quickly adjust monies as they came in with COVID. Randy, you, I can't say enough, you stepped up to the plate after Jeff's passing, and it truly does not go unrecognized, so please, please know that. Mike, being able to keep all of our facilities up and running, um, the golf course moving, parks and rec, it's just very much appreciated, and I think I speak on behalf of a lot of our residents when I say sincerely, thank you very much. Last, certainly not least, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and, and get out there and enjoy what you can with the Christmas lights, because I too went to Caesar's Ford Park and drove around and may have stopped at Ritter's for an eggnog milkshake along the way, so. Get out and enjoy. I know, right? Thank you, sir.
All righty. Councilmember Curran?
Thank you, your honor. A couple of things on senior citizens. Uh, Senior Citizens Center will be closed next week, uh, for the, uh, Christmas break. And number two, uh, if you're a member, uh, they have a meal. If you paid five bucks, you could pick it up this Thursday, and they're really great, so I'm just reminding those citizens out here who have reserved a spot, make sure you stop by between, uh, three-thirty and five this Thursday and pick up a great meal. Uh, manager and staff, same thing that all the other council members said, you're all terrific. You've done a great job this year, and I'm proud to be a part of the council, and, uh, just want to thank you all for a very, very, uh, great, great time and effort that you've put forward. And then certainly to encourage our citizens to visit the small businesses. Don't forget, uh, Christmas is coming up, and, uh, the small businesses need any effort that you could put forward to support them. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. Been great this year. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Flash Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too want to thank the staff. I know that seems to be something we do a lot here, but, uh, I don't think we could do the job that we do up here if they didn't do what they do to help us out, because they give us the information that we need to have. Sometimes it's, uh, it's a lot of information, but it's good information, and it takes, uh, some time, uh, all of my Friday, Saturday to go through it, but we do it, and, uh, but we thank you very much for that. I, it's, uh, what, what you do does not go unnoticed. I mean, we really appreciate that. On another note, I'm fortunate to be the council representative for the Beaver Creek Youth Council, uh, and they're doing a couple of projects coming up here. Two of the projects they do in, uh, especially around Christmas time, they do an adopt a senior where they'll go to, uh, nursing homes and find people that don't have family. And, uh, they get gifts for them so that they're not left out. This year was a little difficult because the dances that they have are what usually support that and get them money. So they went out and asked for donations, and they were really overwhelmed by the amount of donations that they received. They're able to, uh, address fourteen seniors, uh, this year, plus have some additional gifts for, uh, people that don't, don't get much. Uh, so I think that's a, it's a really good program that these kids are involved in, and they really do a lot to help our community. Another project they do, this was started by the Hess family, uh, back in two thousand eight, and it's called, uh, I think it's Bears for Children's, uh, where they make, they go to build a bear, and, uh, they'll make bears and, and donate them to children. The first year they did it, they did twelve. Uh, this year, their goal is six hundred. Uh, they're well on their way to getting that, but they do need help. Uh, there, there's a couple of ways that you can do that if you wanted to help donate, uh, to that. Uh, you can contact it through bearsforchildrens@gmail.com or visit their website at, uh, www.bears, the, the number four, childrens dot weebly, W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com. Uh, it, it's, it's really a, a good activity that they get involved in. I don't know, I, it's been a long time since my kids were in children's, but I remember probably the first eight years that I had kids, I had at least one of them in children's for a week or two, uh, every year. In fact, my vacations for those eight years was spent, was spent at children's. Uh, so getting those, uh, those gifts like that is really a good thing. Finally, I want to wish everyone on council, everybody in the chambers and everybody at home, uh, a very happy holiday season, and hope the new year brings us some clarity on how we go forward, hopefully without COVID, uh, because I've had enough of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And of course, I'm the, uh, I'm going to say yes and second every, all the comments about staff. It's been a tough year. Uh, there's no bit out about it. It's been tough for the public, it's been tough on staff, and it's been, it's just one of these things that my experience, talking with other communities, we have maintained more continuity of operation and public access than many of our cohorts. And so that deals a lot with how council is, was willing to come back to the table, and has a lot to do with how staff was so eager to get back and provide those services that our citizens expect. So, uh, we, I think, came out, uh, very well compared to some other communities, and, uh, so I say thank you. And of course, the holidays are coming up, and everybody does not celebrate in the same way, so however you celebrate the holidays, I want, hopefully, hopefully it's full of joy and happiness. You know, two thousand twenty, we've all said it, the COVID, but if you look deep, You know, 2020, we've all said it, the COVID, but if you look deep, and it's not just our staff, just look around the public, you can find plenty of good that came out of this. So what I, my hope is, is that we take that good that we can still remember and say, yes, we did good things, and the public did good things. But then let's move on to 21 and know that it's going to be even better.
Right.
So I'm looking forward to 2021. I do want to thank this council. You guys make my life a lot easier than it could be. I don't think anybody here was on council when I became mayor, so it's been a, you know, we've had some changeover. Well, yeah, the guy sitting out there. But, so it has been a joyous ride for me, and look forward to next year as well. So again, Merry Christmas, have a safe, and Happy New Year. And with that, we will move to the city manager's report, and I'm sure he doesn't have any.
I'll be brief. I'll be very brief. Winter walks at Wardinger Park, December 14th started tonight through the 28th, so the next two weeks. It's at 3080 Kemp Road, and this is, you can visit the park with your family and friends. It's open air. It's, the cabins are not open, but they're decorated, as said. There's four service organizations have decorated them, and again, there is a signs where the QR code, you can use your smartphone and take a picture of that and, and rank them which ones is the best. The Kiwanis, you see, you see ones there, Optimist Club as well, so vote for that. If you have any question, you can call the Parks Department, 427-5514, but get out and check those out. Also, just real quick, just as the holidays are coming, city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th, and of course, on Friday, January 24th, January 1st, that'd be a new one, for non-emergencies. Always please, if it's an emergency, call 911, but if it's a non-emergency and there's something in the road, or there's something, call the police dispatch at 426-1225. They'll dispatch the proper public service employees if there's something like that that's wrong. So other than that, I echo Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see y'all next year.
Thank you. At this point on the agenda, it's citizen comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? If there is, please come forward, give us a name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, or have some time donated. Thank you.
All right. My name is Ted Hipsher. My address is 1946 North Longview Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's nice to be here today. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. So I've been a resident here for about five years. I'm happy to say that in that time, I've gone from having no higher level education to having a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Wright State, and I'm currently about a year away from getting a industrial, or sorry, a master's in industrial and systems engineering from Purdue University. I'm here today in relation to that degree, and to potentially offer services in relation to the upcoming semester. So I will be taking a high-level systems engineering course. The goal of this course is to potentially identify issues or inconsistencies with whatever system would like to be defined, so something that I could think of off the top of my head would be, say, police response, fire response, the way that the city council interacts with the citizens, parks management, social services, you could think of a long list of many things. This, the whole idea behind this is to get some type of sponsor to allow us to do this work. So this sponsorship would not necessarily involve any kind of monetary sponsorship. It would solely be access and time and cooperation with whatever individuals would be involved. So this could be, let's say, the police chiefs, members of council, whoever it might be. Just to be clear, this would not necessarily be solving any kind of problems that might be found. This is simply meant to identify potential, potential issues or suggest areas where competencies could be increased. I do have several examples, or sorry, I have a single example with me. I have several copies. Unfortunately, I did not bring enough copies for everybody, but it is an example in Indianapolis of a nonprofit group, which I believe would be most related to this setting. My thought here today was to bring this up to city council and everybody else who would be here, as I figure you guys would be best to direct where this effort might be able to go. With all that said, I have, or I would be more than happy to take any questions that you might have. To be honest with you, I don't have all the answers today, but I can certainly forward these questions on to the instructor or whoever else might be involved. Obviously, this is not taking place till 2021, so I do not have a lot of the background information that might be necessary.
You finished there?
Yes, sorry, sir.
Well, we appreciate the input, and it's always, it can always be an interesting undertaking to get a fresh set of eyes to, to look at how things work. And so I would encourage you to leave your information with the city manager. Would this, this would be like an internship, but maybe not paid? Is that how it is?
Um, I guess you might be able to consider it that way. I don't know if it's going to be quite that involved, at least what I believe an internship to be. I believe the way that this would work as far as me personally, especially considering that this is with Purdue in Indiana, is I would be collecting a lot of the information necessary, a lot of the, say, software used, or a lot of the people involved, and the hierarchies associated, and then I would be bringing that back to other students that would be on my team.
Okay. Well, again, I think the best bet is for you to, maybe right after the holidays, is sit down with our city manager and, and see how you might be able to fit in with the new year coming up.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close citizen comment section, and I need a motion for executive session, please.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes and for Preparing for, Conducting, or Reviewing Negotiations or Bargaining Sessions with Public Employees.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. And for the announcement, there will be a, likely a decision coming after the executive session, so we will reconvene this meeting here and vote on a particular issue. So with that said, we are in executive session. Thank you.
Good.
Do you want to bounce it for him to give a brief?
Yeah, sure, please. All right, we're, we're back. I need a motion to exit executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to exit executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. I need a motion to reconvene a regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reconvene our meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same. We have reconvened. The item for, on the, for discussion would be Resolution 20-47, and Bill, or 47, and you need to read that, Dan.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the Communication Workers of America AFL-CIO number 4322.
Thank you. All right. Give us some highlights there, Bill, please.
Yeah, good evening again. This is a, a agreement with the Communication Workers of America. It's a three-year term that goes from 21 through 23. The city and the unions had done and negotiated this collective bargaining agreement, and some of the quick highlights are, it establishes the wage increases for the next three years, and does a little bit of modification of their current health insurance plan and the minimum requirements for those new employees coming into the plan, and how that'll be structured, and it also reviews a little bit about the maximum contribution rate for the employees in that term of the contract itself, so relatively minor changes as far as the number goes, but those are the two or three ramifications that are key to this negotiations and getting this CWA agreement, again, a three-year term agreement wrapped up, so.
All right, thank you very much. Any input from council? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 20-47. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.